I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, September 9, 2020, and we will begin with the Pledge of Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and our first item is approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
My second.
All right, we'll call the Mary. Jim.
Aye.
Rita.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right, we will begin with board reports. Mary, you're first on my screen, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I just want to remind us that there's a lot of information available on the school system website at smcpss.org, and many of your concerns can be answered if you check it out. There's a tremendous amount of information, and it is a lot to read. We have things posted such as our BOE meeting, our town hall meetings, the how-to tutorials, Nutrislice, setting up your device, Schoology, our Pathways, Be Your Best You, our student videos, and I want to thank the parents and the citizens for letters that they have addressed to the Board of Education and the superintendent. We love to hear from you. All the board members get the letters, and they are sent to the appropriate person for attention. And if you want to write us, please do at boe@smcpss.org. I would like to welcome back the students, teachers, and staff through virtual learning, and we are strong together. So thank you as we navigate these unprecedented times. Thank you.
Jim.
I attended a coffee with Sheriff Cameron yesterday on a virtual Zoom, and one of the questions I asked was, the schools were hoping the students will be coming back shortly, and I wanted to know the sheriff's plans for helping embolstering safety in schools. So he mentioned that he meets regularly with Dr. Smith and Mrs. Brewster. He mentioned that not only do we have SROs in the three high schools, but also in the four middle schools, and he mentioned that he got a special grant for paying overtime, so there's going to be a lot more exposure of police officers in and around all of our schools. So I thought that was very enlightening that he said that he's spending this additional money to protect his students. That's all I hear.
Nikina.
All right, so schools opened last week on August 31st, and I had my last first day of high school, which is very exciting, but also a little bit sad because this is my last year with SMCPS. I've been here since pre-K. But other than adapting to distance learning, I've been in contact with advisors of different clubs and activities at Leonardtown to figure out the best ways to keep members involved through the use of Schoology and other platforms just to have an active membership this year.
Okay.
I want to thank the IT department again for continuing to get people hooked up in their laptops and their tablets, everything, especially down in my area, down in the Ridge area, because there's a lot of people without internet and getting them hooked up with hotspots and in the future getting lined to their house. So thanks again, IT department.
Kathy.
I once again participated in a Zoom meeting with the Mayb Legislative Committee. We continue to share what's going on in the various school systems across the state in terms of COVID exposure and the response to this unprecedented time that we are living in currently. So it is a work in progress and doing our best to try to stay on top of things.
And I just want to thank all of the teachers and staff for the heroic efforts over the last several, two weeks really, since they came back to school, you know, and then bringing in the virtual students or virtual classrooms last week. Kudos to everyone. We did not have, knock on wood, the problems that some of the other counties did with starting up. I know Baltimore County went online yesterday, and it was not quite as seamless as what everyone had expected it to be, and I can tell you firsthand from my niece and nephew's experience. So I just, once again, the tremendous amount of work. Thank you to Dr. Walker and Mike Watson and their committee on the announcement came out yesterday about return to sports play. And I just want to let everyone know that none of the decisions that are made for the schools are being made independently or without a committee. And I mean, that return to sports committee had, you know, dozens of people that were involved, from parents to coaches to, you know, to students, to everyone. So even though if you think that your voice isn't being heard, I'm sure that your same concern has been brought up because of the myriad of people that we have contacted in order to participate in these committees before, and even then, the final decision is still brought before Dr. Smith and his team, before it's actually put into place. So I know there's a lot of students that are extremely excited about it. You know, it's been, it's been a tough road for them. That was a big social aspect for a lot of kids, and I think it's great that our county has done the job to meet the metrics in order to start that. So thank you. With that, I will turn it over to Scott.
Thank you. Let me. And certainly, and Dr. Brewster was directly involved in pretty much every single meeting of the Return to Play Committee, walking through the metrics and working through that, as well as then coordinating that also with our local county youth sports leagues and things such as that. We, a five-week season for the spring, a five-week for the fall, and a five-week for the winter. The reason we're bringing back spring first is that it is an outdoor, low to medium-risk sport play, then it will go to the higher risk with close contacts for things such as football. We'll be working all that out. We are, we are excited. We'll follow our metrics, and we'll include a little bit about that when we do our town hall next week. So opening week, as you alluded to, we had, the best news is that the clever portal that got to the Schoology platform remained stable all week, and with the exception of some power outage at Esperanza Middle School because one of the Phase something, something, something had an issue and they had to shut down, we were consistently connected all week. Now, I understand, you know, as we go across the county, that's not necessarily, every single day, everybody's consistently connected, but as a system, the platform was stable for the entire week. Obviously, the teachers did an incredible job of welcoming kids back, acclimating them to the new normal, navigating the platform, and most importantly, proactively communicating, communicating, communicating. In fact, the communication is key. I know that on social media, you'll have a whole bunch of people that kind of jump in, swipe themselves here and there, and then jump back out. Some with children, some without children, some with children in other counties who are commenting on posts down here. Please, as I've stressed over and over again, don't, if it's on Facebook, it's on Facebook. That doesn't mean it's the truth. Go, please go to the source. Our schools are sending out very targeted and specific information through email, through social media, and most importantly, Smore postings. They're all using this platform called Smore. It works on your phone, your tablet, your computer. They're putting it, they're sending it out in emails, they're sending it out in text messages, they're sending it out on social media, and this one, they're conveying a great deal of information about the daily activities of the school, the schedule of the school, technology pickup. Every single one of the schools is using this platform. So if you're not reading your Smore, you're going to be missing out on exceptionally important information. This is when all eyes need to be on, and I applaud the teachers, the administrative staff, the support staff that are putting together really consistent communication so that everybody knows what's happening with their students in each one of their schools. Getting connected, I'm going to actually drop that out for a second. The best way to gather statistics is to go through the Clever app. So the kids that have to log on to any one of the platforms or access any of our online resources, the first step is they go to Clever and they log in. To be able to log in successfully in Clever, they have to have an active email address, they have to know their password, and they have to be able to navigate to their end where they're going. So we've been gathering clever access to begin with. The greatest success is really happening across our middle schools. Esperanza, 94% of the kids are logging on to Clever. Leonardtown Middle, 96, Margaret Brent, 97, and Spring Ridge, 93. So we're, you know, we're all in the A category or even A-plus category at the middle school. At our high school, Chopticon, in Leonardtown, 95, 96 respectively, 89 for Great Mills High School, and that's where we, that's kind of where we find the targeted element of our work. You'll also see that our schools in the Lexington Park area are Title I schools. Some of our smaller schools that are a bit more far-flung, you'll see that their connection is about 77, 70, I think 77 is the lowest percent. So one quarter of our children are not successfully logging on through the Clever app and getting onto the Schoology platform at the elementary level at several of these schools. And that is to be expected. Recognize that they may have intermittent access to technology. They may not necessarily have the really strong and engaged support unit at home. This is the reason why we are moving forward the way we're moving forward. This is why we've put forth a concrete plan for kids coming back to school. That is why we are looking at our littlest learners first, because we recognize that an online educational experience is probably going to leave the ones who we need most involved behind. So when we talk about bringing back Head Start and Pre-K, that's pretty much where we're targeting those resources because we recognize that's where we're having our greatest challenges. But some of our schools, some of our littlest schools, White Marsh Elementary, 98%, Dinerd Elementary, 100%, every single one of those kids has successfully logged on and is navigating the Schoology platform at that school. I just want to talk about the letter to parents and a little bit more following on to that. On Friday, we sent a letter to all parents saying that based on the governor's movement to Stage 3 and the Maryland State Superintendent's emphasizing that schools need to be open for in-person instruction, and the State Board of Education's review of all the individual plans that were put forth from the school systems, we wanted to put concretely out what our return to school plan was and benchmark it out with data and timelines. So Phase 1, as was outlined last week and reemphasized in the letter to all parents with links to the presentation and the return plan, says that next Monday, next, next Monday, September 21st, we are going to return to in-person instruction for four groups of kids: Head Start, Pre-K, Sail, and Compass. Those are regional special ed programs. The reason why we are using these programs is because these are populations that distance learning does not really meet the measured mark. These are kids that need to be in person for instruction. They need to get a solid start, and these are the groups that we're having the largest challenge with making sure that we get them consistently connected and engaged in instruction. They are also self-contained, very small numbers of children. Pre-K classes are anywhere from 10 to 15 if everybody showed up. Head Start classes are less than that. Sail and Compass are very small groups of children in classes with multiple levels of instructional support. So we sent this letter out to everybody. One of the things that we referenced in this letter is that we need now really good data from them to tell us what their intentions are. So we said we are going to be surveying parents. We're going to be sending out a survey, return to school. So we have created the survey, personalized to every single one of the schools to go out to the parents of that school, and the parents, we're asking them for two pieces of information. One is, are you interested in having your child return to hybrid instruction, two days in person per week, three days online? If not, you would remain online for all five days. Now, I know there's been a whole bunch of speculation about what that's going to look like if you have two groups of people, and we have to get back to the essential. So everybody seems to be kind of skating past the point. The CDC's guidelines, the governor's guidelines, MSD's guidelines are that only half of the kids can be in a classroom on any given day. So to be able to provide half of the kids on any given day, you have to double your instructional staff. So if anybody really wanted to make sure that we had everybody served and we met the CDC guidelines, you would have infused double basically the funding for school systems so they could double their instructional staff because that's the only way you can reduce class size by 50%. That didn't happen. We have no additional money in this budget other than grant funds specifically targeted for things which have afforded us the opportunity to buy more laptops and tablets and the hotspots and talk about connection and all of this stuff, or to buy personal protective equipment, things like that. Nobody gave us any more money for people. So if you're going to reduce the class size by half and you are not going to increase your staffing at all, you're going to have to compromise. You're going to have to come up with creative solutions. You are going to have to manage expectations. So we proposed a hybrid that gets kids in at least two days out of five, learning three days online. The structure has been built out in the Schoology platform with the entire content and learning sets for the first marking period. And as we're working through the first marking period, money has been made available for teachers to work on building outside of their regular duty day, additional money provided to them for hourly employment so they can build the second marking period, the third marking period, the fourth marking period. The resources exist on Schoology right now. In fact, if you were truly motivated, and some of our children are, and maybe perhaps you have them in your home, you can log on to Schoology ahead of time, before they even have the class. They can go through and read the materials, review the work, practice the exercise, and complete the assignments and expectations before they ever get into a synchronous classroom. The synchronous classroom is an opportunity for all the children to gather, to work with the teacher, the teacher to walk through questions, to help them understand the platform, but the material is already cut, is already loaded into the Schoology platform. We're going to have to work all this out. We're going to have to figure all this out because nobody doubled our professional salaries. Nobody increased the number of teachers that we have. But we have to have data. So we need to know how many of our parents are going to expect their kids to come back for two days, or how many kids want to stay in virtual. We also need to know how many kids are going to be able to ride the bus, need to ride the bus, and how many kids might be transported by their parents. Those two questions are at the core of the survey. That's all, that's all we really want to know. Are you interested in your child coming back for two days? If you are interested, would they need to ride the bus? We have to have that data so then we can make plans accordingly. If 80% of all the parents say, we want our children back two days a week, then we have to build a plan that accommodates 80% of all the children. If only 40% of the children say they want to come back, and that 60% will want to remain online for the full five days, then we have to build a plan for that. The first thing all we have to have from parents is two answers, whether or not they want their children to return two days or not, and if they are going to return for two days, whether they would need to ride the bus or not. Sure.
Okay. The only, for parents who are concerned that these two questions are vague and not providing enough detail, I would send them to our return to school plan, correct?
Right.
That is on the website.
Yes.
So I had a lot of comments like, well, there's no detail on these questions. Well, all of that is laid out in SMCS, SMCPS Return to School Plan that is housed on the website.
Right. There are about 25 pages discussing what hybrid instruction looks like, what the schedules are, what that all encompasses. And the next town hall that we do, there's resources, look at that, right to your point, there's resources that are available, and the next town hall on Wednesday will be specifically talking about entering Phase 1, what that looks like. Until we know how many people are really going to come back, how many people really want to come back, and how many people want to remain, then we need to go through and work all those elements out and finalize the schedules for all the students. As of right now, we built the schedules, the way the schedules are running at each one of the schools, we can follow those exact same schedules and fold them into instruction inside the buildings. But what it'll exactly look like, we won't know until we have the data, and we can move forward for that. Now, as for the data, when we get to the town hall, I will ask Dr. Brewster to join us as well so we can look at the data as far as the two things that are driving this, what's the positivity rate and what's the new case rate per 100,000 people in a particular county. I have had conversations with Dr. Brewster several times. I spoke with her yesterday as well. We are seeing some cases move up, those numbers move up. And why do we see cases move up? Because we had a beautiful three-day weekend, and people were out doing what they wanted to do, and maybe they weren't necessarily following the CDC guidelines of wearing a face mask and being six feet apart. And the one thing that we do know is that where we see people wearing a face mask and staying six feet apart, we don't see transmission rates. So with that, that's, that's where we are for today. Again, I want to thank the incredible work that everybody is doing every single day. Every day is an opportunity to solve a problem we never thought we'd have to face, and we move through each and every single day, ready to tackle what comes before us. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone have anything else to add? Okay. All right, let's see. We have no public hearing, but I see, I assume we have public comment. So if you call the first speaker to the podium, I will read our public comment statement.
Sheriff Austin.
So the Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. This Board will not permit comments criticizing the individual staff or students since it's outside the scope of public comment. Please keep in mind, the Board sits as an appellate body in both student-employee appeals. We cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate, and that keeps us, gives us the ability to render a fair and unbiased decision. So comments regarding individual student or personnel issues cannot be presented. Speaker is assigned at the beginning of the meeting. You're limited to three minutes per speaker, and you may not yield your time to someone else. And if you have any written statements, if you give them to Peg, then we will all receive copies of them on our Google Drive. So with that, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Many of you know me, but for those of you who don't, I wanted to put a name to a face. I'm Sarah Penrod, former Spanish teacher at Chopticon and now East Mick's new president. Over the last 180 days since March 13th, I have served as East Mick's secretary, then vice president, the reopen task force chair, and a negotiations team member. And through all of that, I was given the unique opportunity to begin building a rapport with the superintendent and his cabinet. So by the time I took the office of president nine days ago, I had already seen what great, creative, excellent things that we were able to accomplish together working as a team, St. Mary's County Public Schools and East Mick. Unfortunately, I also saw the aftermath of what happens when we don't work together to come up with good answers for the issues that we could have never have imagined prior to March. You know, as you all know, right now, we have a tremendous number of staff members who are overstressed, overwhelmed, and tremendously terrified of what's to come over the next several weeks. And it's now my job to be their voice when they feel unheard. It's my job to lead them and to be an example of activism and advocacy. And I might be crazy to take on the presidency in the middle of a global pandemic, but I truly believe that St. Mary's County can set the gold standard in the state of Maryland for what a professional, respectful, and collaborative relationship between a school system and the local education association can look like and how it can be mutually beneficial. And that's why I look forward to working with all of you to come up with the best possible solutions to all of today's issues, to ensure that our staff remains safe, and most importantly, feel supported so that they can best serve our students here in St. Mary's. Thank you for your time, and I hope that all of you remain safe and healthy.
Hi, my name is Marie Rankin. I'm a parent of three children in St. Mary's County Public Schools. I'm also the president of the Benjamin Banneker Elementary PTA. I wanted to talk to the Board today about a statement that they made referring all decision-making regarding the reopening of schools to the St. Mary's County Superintendent, Dr. Smith. As a voting member of the Board of Education, the superintendent has a vote with regards to the reopening of schools. As a voting member of this community of St. Mary's County, I feel as though my vote has been taken away from me, and I no longer have a say in how things are done. As a voting member of St. Mary's County, I am appalled that my elected officials, whose job it is to represent their community's best interests and approve county school policy, has deferred all decision-making to the superintendent of schools. I would ask that the Board of Education stop the reopening plan, hold and allow public comment, and make a decision with regards to reopening the schools that is best suited for our community. I ask that the Board of Education take back the power of the people to have a say in how we reopen schools. I also wanted to make a quick comment on some of the ideas and policy that Dr. Smith has said has been clear and concise and laid out in the Board's or the superintendent's plan for reopening schools. I would just like to note that the hybrid, and the hybrid, the move to hybrid has never once ever stated that students who elected to have fully distant learning would not have meaningful daily contact and instruction from their teachers. I would also like to note that it was never stated that once we went to hybrid, that students who chose the hybrid method would get two days of full instruction and that they would receive three days of no daily meaningful contact and instruction from their teachers. This was a high point of this new plan of Schoolology. It is something that has been boasted about numerous times from Dr. Smith about how wonderful this new program is, how wonderful it is that our students are going to be able to interact with their teachers and with their parent, or with their teachers and their peers. But once we moved to hybrid, that is stripped away from students on all levels. I ask again that the Board of Ed stop the reopening plan, and we go back to collecting data on what parents would choose the options, knowing now that they will not receive daily meaningful contact once we move to hybrid. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Sarah Dixon. I'm the parent of a child in public school district. I am also here as the Banneker PTA Board Member. I do have many concerns. First of all, I want to applaud the school district for the virtual learning plan and First of all, I want to applaud the school district for the virtual learning plan and how we have implemented the start of school virtually. I think it is a fantastic platform and I've really been excited that things have been going very well. My child is pleased, I'm pleased, so thank you very much. But then I get this letter that we're moving towards going back to school very fast and I feel like without data, I mean, I heard the superintendent say that we need the data from the parents to even know what the plan will be. That seems like putting the cart before the horse. I asked my principal, exactly how do you plan to keep our kids safe? Is there testing to be had with the staff or is there some kind of daily symptom check on the kids, whatever, you know, good, that'll do for 14 days before you see symptoms, if at all? And I was told, no, they have no idea what those daily plans are. So I understand that the school board has put together a very great and detailed framework of how we're going to reopen, but those daily, those daily specifics as to how you're going to safely operate the school are not there. And if I'm wrong, please tell me because I would love to send my kid back to school. But right now, I don't feel comfortable doing that without information from you all. Then that brings to the point, well, okay, so I'll virtually keep my kid at home. But now I found out that, well, she will get less education than the other kids that elect to go to the hybrid model. That seems discriminatory, but I have no other option other than to pull my kid out of school and homeschool. So today, that's what I'm thinking I'll have to do, is homeschool then provide them my own platform with their own teacher for daily contact because the school is not going to supply that if I don't send my kid back to school. That is concerning to me and I really wish that there was some kind of public forum that was held so that parents can get these details answered and make an informed decision before we're asked to fill out a survey. Because that's the decision I need to make. It's a life or death situation in my household and I'm sure it is in many other households in the county. So I ask that we slow down, get the data, assess the data, and then make an informed decision as to how we're going to keep all of these children and their families safe. Thank you.
My name is Tammy Payne and I am the teacher that wrote to you all and I sent it personally and not just to the B O C C or whatever you, at B O E at S M C P S. I am the teacher and I'm sorry I'm six feet away. I am taking this off so that you can hear me. And yes, for $10, I purchased a lanyard from a coworker who's now making them so we don't lose them. So, I'm the person that stepped up and said, I've had enough, I have no answers, I'm 18 years in a teaching career, no one has given us direction. And I'm sorry, Dr. Smith, the information that is being given to us is secondhand. We got the letter from the parents on Facebook or emailed to us before we as a staff received the letter when things were going back out. Do you like to work that way to get subverted? I don't even know the right word to say, except that I'm angry. Because it's the second time. And by the way, they're sent out on Friday afternoons at 4:30 when everything is closed and no one can have anything to do except to stew on it for three days. I found it extremely frustrating to walk in here today, and I did take personal leave and I did put my kids synchronous or asynchronous, by themselves, whatever you want to call it, so that I could come over here today and voice my concern. To walk in this locked building and have to have my temperature taken when I don't have to do that at school, nor is that being an option for us at school, is ridiculous. You all, and I say it this way, are standing up there preaching one thing and doing another. And as a teacher, I would expect respect back that you give to each other taking your temperatures, but you're not doing that to the staff. In addition, Schoolology, thank you for the comments on that, it's a wonderful program. But we didn't work just for two weeks. Honey, I've been working that program since June. I wrote the eighth grade curriculum for Schoolology. I didn't get a summer so that I was prepared and now it's been yanked out from underneath of me. And Dr. Smith, we were told to unpublish everything that was put on our site so our parents and our children could not work ahead of us so that we could direct the learning. So, there's another contradiction. And I'm just really frustrated, you guys, very, very frustrated. I'm watching my colleagues cry every day. Cry. I have special ed teachers that I have walked back and forth, begged them not to quit because of what is happening with the special ed right now. I had another special ed employee this morning, I walked through the door at 7:03, yes, I was three minutes late, to have a person sitting in my classroom in the dark crying because their schedules changed yet again and they're a para and were asked and told that they had to write lesson plans. They're paras, they're not teachers. And I'm angry because I have put my life, my soul, finances, so that I can do the job that God put me here to do and that is to teach the children of this county. That's not happening right now. I am teaching, I'm working my ass off, but I'm also spending hundreds of dollars out of my own pocket so that I have a webcam, so that I have a way to walk around to my students so that they're not seeing me just sit like this. I know it's time. I appreciate that, Peg, and I'm not angry with you. But I am very frustrated and I feel like we are not being told ahead of time of anything that's going on. And we are being subverted and that's the way it feels. And to you parents that have received that letter, my heart broke. I cried from here to Pennsylvania to go see my 87-year-old stepfather, who I haven't seen since Christmas because of COVID. And when I sat down and told him that those kids whose parents chose to keep them at home would not have instruction from us, that broke my heart. And I, and I don't know how to fix it because the message is out there, but you're not listening to the staff. Staff has been working tirelessly trying to, and I know I'm past my time peg, I'm sorry. But staff had the rugs pulled out from beneath of them when that letter came out because now they can't bring their kids into the building. Now they can't, and if they had medical leave or ADA, now all of that is up in question again. So teachers and parents realize that we're trying our best, but we feel like we're being subverted and it's hard. And I have a class in seven minutes. Goodbye.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right, first action item is Policy J F D A, the Student Dress Code. We have Ms. Long and Mr. Daughford.
Good morning. As Mr. Daughford and I are here this morning to present the recommendations for Dress Code, Student Dress Code Policy J F D A, this is the second reading. The Dress Code Committee spent three meetings together reviewing the policy and regulations. The committee member, the committee consisted of 20 members, who are comprised, the committee was comprised of school administrators, district administrators, teachers, students, parents, the Education Association of St. Mary's County, and also St. Mary's Association of School Administrator and Community Representation as well. The purpose of the policy is to outline the Board of Education of St. Mary's County Guidelines for Student Dress Code. And Mr. Daughford will share the recommendations from the committee.
All right, here is the current policy. In red are the changes and I'll read the changes that we suggested. Language, language images or symbols, or symbols on attire that offend, demean, or promote hatred towards an identifiable person or group based on a person's race, color, religion, ethnicity, national origin, ancestry, gender, sexual orientation, or disability, or disability are disruptive and detrimental to learning. So that was the language and this was the rest of the document and we had no suggestive changes to the rest of that document.
And this is the continued current policy, no changes to definitions or the expectations, of course, for evaluation review and the updates. So the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve this policy as presented.
All right, discussion, Mrs. Washington?
I have one question for Mrs. Long. It was brought up by a parent, that would a tattoo on a student's body be counted in this policy and where would that fit in?
Yep, absolutely. That is part of the dress code under symbols or messages generally accepted to promote intolerance hate or racial slurs. It would be covered there.
So it's on your dress and your body?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim?
I have a question for Mr. Daughford. In terms of identifying what or what not might be considered offensive, I'm thinking, you've heard the expression that one man is a traitor, another way of describing it is a patriot. So I'm thinking like a hat that's a MAGA hat, Make America Great Again. Some people find that greatly offensive, other people look at it as a honoring America. So in my example, would that MAGA hat be considered offensive?
And that was one of the things that as a committee that we did talk at length about. However, that MAGA hat is the, is a representation of a political slogan and it is not, it would not fall in the terms of, of hate crime or offensive index in that way. It's, and that, we also saw that the same as Black Lives Matters things and that people might say that that's, have that same feeling about Black Lives Matters. But again, that's, those are political movements. The things that we identified were things that had actually been in different court cases and had been identified in courtrooms as hate, as promoting hatred. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Nagina?
No questions, thank you.
Rita?
Yeah, it's question statement. So I went back and looked at the, your regulations on like say sunglasses and I didn't see anything on there. So, once again, it goes back to safety. If somebody has a face mask on, which they're going to be required to do, they have a hat, it doesn't matter what type or head covering, and they have sunglasses on, I really find that would be very hard to identify a student if there is a problem or an issue going on. And I guess I would feel a lot better as far as a head covering goes when we no longer are wearing face masks because I think it's going to be hard to identify the students.
Yep, and you're right, when we, when we look at the Student Dress Code, that's, that is, you know, the administrator will be aware of that because it's anything that creates a potential safety or health hazard as well, right, or a potential disruption. So when we look at that, we definitely have to be aware of that. You're right, it is going to look different when they're wearing face coverings.
No, that's, thank you. And, you know, for that, we are responsible, our only responsibility by law is the policy. So the regulation is, is by law, the superintendent to determine, to be part of this. So, and, you know, I, I see it a lot, there's, the challenge is what, what by law is the role of the board, not just what we think, but what by law and then what by law is the superintendent. And that's a lot of times what we refer to. I think that you've done a really good job of trying to address some issues, both with the policy changes that you've, you're recommending from the committee. And then I appreciate that you provided the, the regulations as well. So, I hope that this makes, makes the job of our administrators and our teachers easier, that, that we can be respectful and that we are doing our best to make sure our students are learning. That's all.
All right, I don't have anything. May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve Policy J F D A, Student Dress Code as presented.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
All right, roll call. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Myself is aye. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Let's see, somewhere I think we have Dr. Jaffers on the grading policies.
Yes, that's me. I'm ready to go.
Yeah, you are.
He looks like he works at an aircraft controller.
How many pages? How many pages? They cut me down today. I was cut down a little bit. Not too bad today. Pretty straightforward. Again, today we're talking, good morning, we're making some recommendations to our rating policy, I K, I K A and I K B. Again, reminder, Texas was straight through, they were deletions. Red is now the assertions that were recommended. So we're really talking about eradicating interims at this point and really moving towards report cards one time a quarter. We're hoping that everyone gets their sort of information via either their school, teacher, or through Schoolology in and of itself. We made a change to the Maryland State Standards, the College of Career Rating Standards. Things changed quite a bit, so we wanted to make sure that we're ahead of the curve. So Maryland State Standards would, seems to all of us that that would not change, so we wanted to make that language consistent. And we also knocked out, if you go back one slide, we just knocked out that we're not asking each school to provide a copy of the whole procedures to students and their parents. We feel like that is done on a continual basis by the school teacher, by the teacher, by the classroom, in and of itself. Report card, we did, per Ms. Allen, we had academic progress, we wanted to make sure we captured that as far as report card goes because we have made a lot of progress in elementary grading and standard-based grading, so we did not want to take that one out, so we actually put that back in. Grades have been, you know, that was an assertion that we made since the first reading. Again, a lot of the language has been repeated in middle school as well. We've added in red, these were changes to the policy about home access and our online learning management platform, my email, these things have been added. And again, the big main thrust of this policy change is that we are, we're not issuing interims at this time midway through the quarter. Again, language is identical, Maryland State Standards has been replaced. We wanted to get consistent with the statements inside the policy. You could see we had College of Career Rating Standards in elementary, we had state curriculum for middle schools, we wanted to get sort of consistent throughout. In high school, basically, emulates the same sort of language and changes that we discussed around the state standards, no interims, so we just, the site change that we did make was we took correspondence out and added online courses in lieu of correspondence to reflect the sort of, the new paradigm we're in. We've added our, since the policy had been revised, we have added Academy of Finance and Academy of Visual Performing Arts to our repertoire of academies. and Academy of Visual Performing Arts, uh, to our repertoire of academies. Uh, and they are, uh, reflected in, um, homework averages for some of their courses as well. I would ask the Board, um, of Education approve this policy as presented.
Okay, anyone? Mary, questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Jim?
No questions. Thank you.
Rita?
No questions.
Kathy?
I appreciate that you took my suggestion, my concern to heart. I understand that with the elementary grading policy, um, that, uh, that you've, you've inserted the word grades or, or kept the word grades by virtue of the fact that while the way we're capturing academic progress may not, um, come across as an A, B, C, D, whatever, that that academic progress, um, really has the, um, you know, force of a grade, but, but certainly the, um, uh, the importance of a grade, uh, for our elementary students. But that, um, the way we are choosing to capture that, um, gives a lot more information to parents than, like, an A that might come to a student in one school is perhaps going to look different than an A that comes to a student in another school, much as we try to be consistent. But by capturing academic progress for our elementary students in the way we're doing, um, it, it's much more descriptive of what a student can and cannot do at that point in time. So thank you. I appreciate that. That's all.
Okay, I don't have any questions or comments. So, uh, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board approve policies I K, IKA, and IKB as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself as aye. The motion is carried. All right, next up, our favorite time of the year of the State Capital Improvement Program. Ms. Howe? Good morning. Hold on. Give one second for our IT support here to get us loaded here.
There you go.
Okay. Go ahead, Kim. It's all you.
Okay, so it is that time of year that we're going to be starting to talk about next year's Capital Improvements Program. And we've been working quite a bit over the summer understanding new state requirements and changes. And I'm not going to go into, to everything in depth, but I did want to let you know there's a lot of changes that are happening, happening at the state. Um, and we're adjusting and we're making sure that we're in compliance, um, and asking questions along the way to make sure that we're getting, um, the, the best opportunity for our Capital Improvements Program to go forward. One of the big things, and if you're following along, um, at the state levels, we've been talking about statewide facilities assessment. Um, that was before the Board of Public Works earlier in the month and it has been delayed. Um, they are still running into challenges on the bidding and procurement of the statewide facility assessment. My office has started pulling data together for the requirements that were listed over the summer, but I'm not sure when this is going to happen. Um, if it does go to, um, an appeal to the Circuit Court, it'll be delayed another six months to a year. Um, and I, I feel that that's where it is headed, is that it's going to continue on with the part case. So we keep you posted as we go, but this is going to change the way we're funded in the future. So it's really important that we stay on top of what's going on. In addition, the State, um, Interagency Commission on School Construction is restructuring. Uh, we're going to be going to regional facility managers that we'll be working with. And some of those have already been hired for some of the more populous counties across the state. We do not have one for the Southern Maryland region yet, but we'll, um, you know, look very forward to working with them in the future when they come. Um, things are being looked now as a facilities portfolio. So when we talk about a project like Kansas City, like we're going to talk about today, um, the state wants us to look at our entire portfolio and assess what needs we have. And that will definitely be, um, important after the statewide facility assessment is completed, as we'll be looking at entire portfolio and not individual projects. Um, they are working on project pipelines and contract templates. They're trying to standardize things across the state, um, so that it is easier for the LEA and the, and the state to review projects. Next slide please. As a part of that, they are looking to implement a business management system. It would be a one-point access, um, to track all projects from the time that they are conceived to the time that they are completed. Um, they are in procurement on this right now. It will then take a year to design and implement. So this time next year, we'll have more information on that business management system. They're also looking to make some changes to COMAR, and this one is one that we are paying very close attention to, because as we start talking about larger projects that we have to spend, um, state funding over multiple years, um, they're changing it to require 75% of the project would need to be under contract within two years. On a large project that we need to collect for three or four years state funding to make sure that we're able to proceed forward, this could present a challenge. And it's not just for St. Mary's that this could present a challenge. It'd be, um, this way for many, um, LEAs across the state. We're, we're working on this and we're trying to get them to understand, um, that we can't all forward on projects locally. That's just not an option for off counties. The other big piece of this, um, is that they're looking to require, um, different, um, educational specification requirements for projects. So it's going to look at how, um, designing construction and I saw how we put the projects in for consideration to make sure that we're going to be able to meet the, um, educational specifications, schematic design, um, DVDs, all of those in, in alignment with the contract funding requirements. When we go and ask for a project, we're really going to be ready, need to be ready to go under construction at that point in time. And with the planning studies we've been doing, we're, we're getting there. Um, in addition, they're looking at, um, House Bill 1295 that was approved in the 2020, um, session. It requires each school, um, system to have an adopted energy policy. We do have one. Um, I'll work with Mr. Wynn to make sure it meets the requirements of what the state's looking for. Um, but they're really trying to drive, um, the energy cost of buildings down. Um, so that's something that we'll need to take a look at. And the maintenance inspections, they have changed those. It was started to be implemented over the summer. It's based on a roof break. Um, they're really looking, I think if the I A C had their way, there would be a statewide work order system that we would use. And they really want to track the turnaround time on work orders. Um, and the roof break, um, if they find a deficiency, the amount of time that it takes you to turn that around, um, and correct it once they identify a problem, or perceive a problem, um, they'll improve your score. So this is something that is evolving and we're going to continue to monitor as well. They're really looking at energy consumption, how we monitor our buildings as part of the equitable processes as we move forward. Next slide please. So where we are this year, um, the I A C is still targeting us for approximately 4.6 million per year. Um, this, I think, will be, um, different, different when we get, um, statewide facilities assessment across the state. This year, um, for FY 21, the year we're in, we did receive 5.3 million dollars, which increases our rolling tenure average. State increased the cost of construction this year just a little bit under 4%. And that is to, to accommodate for the changes in the, um, cost of goods and services. And right now, there's, um, wood is a real issue. Where in the past it's been steel. Right now, wood production, um, is an issue across the country. Our state funding still remains at 58%. But one of the things we found as we worked with the state over the summer is they do put out their instructions over the, the summer of how to prepare the document. One of the things that really impacted us, and we'll talk about this with Mechanicsville, is they eliminated the category of multi-systemic projects. Um, the only thing that they're looking for you to combine is a roof and an HVAC. If you go beyond a roof and an HVAC and you want to make any other improvements, there isn't a category to do that any longer other than to go with a limited renovation. Um, in the past, we've done limited renovations and they include the educational scopes, but they're, they're a very hefty project. There's a lot in them. Um, if you look at Leonardtown Middle School and Spring Ridge Middle School, it wasn't really where we were headed with Mechanicsville, but we have worked with them and, and as we go forward, um, they understand that this change impacted everyone this year and they, they did work with us on it. As we look to the future, um, they're going to be looking at the age of our facilities and that spirit assessment. In a recent presentation that the state did on that, we have the fourth youngest overall portfolio. Um, and that's because of the, the wonderful work we've done in renovating our facilities. But as we look forward, that could be a potential issue if we are the fourth youngest, um, portfolio when the school facilities assessment comes. There's going to be a lot of other schools that are going to rank higher in need across the state than, than ours. Um, we had a lot of conversation with them over the summer about total cost of ownership. Our philosophy in St. Mary's County is we build buildings to last. Um, we do, go back and we do our roofs and our HVACs and we renovate, but we build our buildings to last. They're not 30, 35-year buildings that at the end of their, that perceived life, we would tear them down and build new. For us, there's many challenges. One, there's still a lot of life left in those buildings and they're community schools that, that many generations have gone to and there's that, that feeling of, of community pride in their schools. Um, we don't have holding schools to, to do that as well. So it's something that we're going to have continued discussion with them about the model of how we, we keep our buildings going, um, for longer than 30 to 35 years. Um, multi-year, five-year projects is still going to be an issue that we have to discuss as well. So where we are right now, um, our top priority for class is Mechanicsville Limited Renovation. Um, it is a modified limited renovation. It will, um, in total, um, we'll be looking at a project total of 11.2 million dollars. Um, that is up 1.5 from this time last year. Uh, if you take into account the great, um, almost 3.6% that the state went up, um, we're above that project by about a little over a million dollars. And that million dollars represents what it takes to meet the requirements of the state for the funding of this project as a modified limited renovation. We'll be doing some interior work and some, um, of the windows. Um, and we'll really be looking at a lot of the infrastructure, the life cycle systems, PA, the fire alarm systems. Um, we're going to be looking at ADA compliance. Um, and that's going to affect the doors, um, the flooring, the bathrooms. So there will be, um, some significant changes to the building when you walk in. It will look different. Um, it will look much, um, more advanced than it currently is from its, um, 1970s look. So it is a great project. The ability for us to add the, the million dollars required us to, to really work with the state. We come up with a project that they approved the scope of already. We'll be meeting with them on the 14th of September, um, to, to finalize that scope. Um, but what it allowed us to do was maximize the increase in cost and get the 58% state dollars. Um, if not, we were going to be looking probably just at a limited replacement project. So this is a really good thing for the school and we're really happy with the project moving forward. When we look forward to FY 2023, um, we're going to have Town Creek's HVAC system, Lady Marshall Dent's modernization. Um, and then in 2024, Great Mills High School, the partial roof systemic, designing constructions, just completing the first phase of this, this is the second phase. And then we would be doing kind of points HVAC systemic renovation, trying to stay in that, um, 4.6 to 5 million dollars at the state, stretching the projects out. And then we get to FY 2025, we have Green Holly's, um, HVAC on the B side and the roof on the A side. And then in 2026, we get to Chocotown High School systemic renovation. And in 2027, we do not add any additional state projects because it's going to take us multiple years to, to get the state's share on that project. And this is where we were talking in the beginning of the presentation. We're going to make sure that they're aware, um, that, that COMAR, we have to be really careful with that, about having projects under construction. Um, we'll make sure that we have all of the documents that we need to be able to go right into construction at that point in time. So our next steps, on September 14th, we have the I A C review, the staff review of Mechanicsville the last time. We'll be talking about the project before we submit and we'll make sure that the scope is completely, um, approvable. We've been working, they've been going to, um, the designees with the project and we've had some back and forth discussions. So I feel very comfortable going forward with that project that they will support. Uh, September 22nd, um, based on your approval today of the plan, we would present to the Commissioners of St. Mary's County for their endorsement. The documents are due to the state on October 7th. Uh, at some point in October, the state will issue, um, meetings and we'll have a staff review of our, our plan. And on November 2nd, the government announces the preliminary C I P budget. And that's why we do so much work over the summers. We want that first round recommendation. So that would happen, um, on December 10th. We would hear that. They are going to issue 75% on December 10th. We want to be in that because the next, um, funding level is on February 11th. They go to 90%, and then we don't care the remainder of the, um, I A C approval to 100% until then. So we're in alignment to, to have a great, um, C I P year. Um, and if you have any questions, I'll be delighted to take those. But we are looking for your approval today of the State Capital Improvements Program.
Mary?
Thank you so much, Ms. Howe, for all the work that you have done for us. You've been with us for several decades and you've done a tremendous job. You always come well prepared. I'm glad to see Mechanicsville Elementary School Limited Renovation Project still at the top of the list. The board has been wanting to see that done for years and years, and that'd be really good to see. As I've always said, that is the first school that people see on the road when they come into the county. Even though excellent learning is going on inside of the school, the outside needs that facelift. Um, so will the outside, you talked a lot about the inside and the windows. So will that exterior be given a great facelift?
So one of the things that, um, we've been talking through the project, um, the security vestibule, the front office, um, the portico will kind of repurpose that portico to, um, address student needs for, um, parent drop-off, um, and to give the school a little additional space. Um, and the windows are going to make a huge difference, um, replacing those windows on that building. Um, one of the other pieces that we're really going to look at is the health suite and reconfiguring, uh, configuring that a little bit as well. Um, so there's going to be some significant changes when you're, you're walking up to the school and when you get inside as well.
Okay, and also Lady Marshall Dent for 2023 renovation will also be excellent because they now have that new parking lot. And so for the school, so that would be great for that and the county that, um, Lady Marshall Dent will be renovated too. So I appreciate our efforts in maintaining our schools, maintaining our investments, and keeping, you know, communities together.
And Lady Dent? Lady Dent will fall into the same process with Mechanicsville. So I've already started looking at that one, um, and started having some discussions about what that's going to look like. It will convert to a limited renovation as well because that is the new category that the state is pointing to. So we'll be looking at that one, um, in a very similar fashion as well.
Okay, Ms. Howe, thank you.
Jim?
Ms. Howe, um, this is Jim Davis. We've been talking about alterations and renovations. Um, I'm thinking, uh, like in new construction, um, the enrollment appears to be leveling off in the county. And I was curious if that's going to affect your long-term capital planning in terms of, uh, kind of a stagnant, um, enrollment, uh, occurred that we're experiencing there?
Yes, we, we did have a new elementary school, um, in the budget for, for several years. Um, we're really looking that we were going to need to build that school. We still do have some isolated overcrowding and we have some plans of how we could address that moving forward without new construction if we need to do that. Given the state regulations of how strict they're going to be and looking at an entire portfolio, um, system wide, that there's not going to be support at the state level at this point in time unless there's a dramatic change in our enrollment. So we'll continue to, to do modernizations and we'll look at what other options we have. We do have capacity study that we can complete, um, to, to look at our total system. Um, and if you asked me this a year ago, pre-COVID, I, I had, had plans. And now we'll, we'll adjust, we'll adapt, and we'll see how things progress on, um, in, in light of where we are in the state.
Just to add, um, what you said, uh, do you see, uh, maybe this is not a fair question, but, uh, the fact that we're doing virtual learning is, could that be a paradigm shift? Could we, could you foresee perhaps that down the road we'll be doing more hybrid, uh, teaching than, uh, we've ever thought of before? And if so, then that would affect our facilities?
So it's, it's probably a discussion that's probably going to be a little bit higher than mine that, um, that would direct that. But I can tell you that across the state, we are having discussions about what it might look like in terms of facilities as we go forward. Uh, I think this, it, you know, if you take away that is positive, it gives us an opportunity to look at things in a different light and a different way and see if our buildings can serve us, um, in a different fashion as we move forward. So I think that those discussions will be happening, not just in our county, but across the state of how we use our facilities, um, in a, in a different environment.
Just to, uh, uh, throw, throw a little light on, uh, changing, uh, way facilities, um, can be used, uh, in the federal government. We've been what we call hotel. For years and years, everybody had a cubicle or had their own office. And many agencies now are what we call hotel. They just have an open space. Uh, the workers come in- what we call hotel. They just have an open space. Uh, the workers come in with their laptop, and they just grab, you know, a chair and a desk. And by doing so, you make the facility much more efficient. And I'm not suggesting this on the schools per se, but that might be something down the road where we might be hoteling, uh, certain facilities to get, um, more efficiency for the space we're in. Just a comment. You don't have to answer.
At least one of the things we've always talked about is flexible spaces. So, um, I'm, I'm hopeful that as we move forward, the, the work that's been done in the past to create flexibility will serve us well as we transition through this.
Thank you.
Nagina?
No questions.
For you.
Um, I wanted to find out about the statewide facilities assessment. We're, uh, looking at our funding since that's in litigation right now. That's, isn't that what you said that it was going to court?
So there, yeah, so there was, um, this has been going on for about two years now. Um, and as, as, as it's been presented, um, there were some initial discussions, um, with a consultant to ask about an existing contract that they had. Um, they wound up not pursuing using that contract. The state put out the school, uh, facilities assessment due to bid. That contractor then put in for a bid to do the work and was denied because they were part of the initial RFP process. Um, it was challenged, um, through, through the state's, um, ethical construction, um, agency, and it was deemed that, that it ruled that they were not allowed to participate. They put it out again for a second time, um, and, um, the contractor was still not, um, just able to participate in that. Um, so at this point, it was going forward with a, um, with a bidder that was the low bidder on the project. It was going this month for approval. Um, the, the original company is now challenging in circuit court. So this is going to delay, and it's all over procurement process, um, at the state level. Um, there was a Board of Public Works meeting, uh, last week. They talked about it, and it, it is going to be held up, um, I think for another six months minimum, um, while this procedure, um, procurement goes through the process.
So, well, with the decision on that, no matter what it is, will that affect any of our, um, proposed projects for, like, say, twenty-three, twenty-four projects going forward with them, how the funding comes in?
Ultimately, yes. The completion of the school facilities assessment, um, could have an impact. Um, because what's going to happen is, like I said, we were deemed to be the fourth youngest county, um, for Asian facilities in the state. Priority is going to be given to those school systems that have very high, um, ratings within the school facilities, and that's going to be based on efficiency. Um, the, the more deficient your building is, the higher that score is going to be. Um, there, we should still be getting our normal allocation, but our pri- priorities, we would then have to have a discussion. If we had a project that scored higher on the school facilities assessment, but was not a top priority for us based on our own interpretation of what we need to do, we then have to have discussions with them. So once this is complete, we will have to, to evaluate our projects against that school facilities assessment and then justify why we're going forward with the projects if we're going forward with it. It doesn't mean we can't continue on. We just have to do probably additional justification based on the actual information we have about our projects.
Okay, so things could be moving around then as far as our projects in the future as how, uh, we prioritize. Is that correct?
Right, so we're going to keep our projects probably, I mean, um, there's a lot of information that goes into this with Mr. Whitten in, um, in maintenance, in term of maintenance, and we're really putting projects forward that are based on our, you know, on the, on the ground. We understand our building needs. Um, so the only thing I could see is additional justification. There could be some projects that come up out of it, but if there's no additional funding, the program really is well thought out, um, for the next six, six, seven years.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just, I have a couple of questions. So on the, on the change with the classification of limited reservation at Mechanicsville, so did that cause us to change the scope of our work and by how much?
So the, the scope did have to increase because to be a limited renovation, you have to have educational enhancements to the building. Um, it went up, um, one point one in total. Um, and the state is paying, out of that one point one, the state is paying five hundred and eighty thousand dollars of that increase. So they're, they're paying their, their, it's fifty-eight percent, but when it, it works out with all the AE fees and all the other things, it works out around fifty percent.
Okay.
If we did not go this path, they would not have approved the project that we had brought forward, um, over the past several years to them. Um, it would have had to have been strictly a systemic renovation, um, and it would have, well, it probably just been the windows, and we would have had to figure out how to locally get the other work done. So this is a win-win. We're getting work done, and they're paying fifty percent of it.
Okay. And then, um, the House bill on the, on the, on withholding the CIP funding, I don't, did that pass?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
The House Bill twelve ninety-five, I, I didn't think that that passed through, that they're going to withhold CIP funds if we don't have an adopted energy policy.
The IAC is going forward with that as, as, and I can confirm they are proceeding forward.
So, meaning even though it didn't pass through the legislature, they're going to still implement it as part of their broad guidance, I guess?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and we can confirm with them. Um, but it was in a presentation that they did the beginning of the month, um, to all facility planners, is that they are proceeding on with that.
Okay. All right, and then I didn't, I didn't know if there have been any discussions, not necessarily with the Board of Public Works, but I, I know you guys have your, you know, your groups that, that, you know, you discuss how all these changes are filtering down through the state. Has there been any conversation about, um, they keep saying that we're going to have a, a budget shortfall for the, for the fiscal year? Is that, what, is there any potential impact on any of the CIP projects that we have slated? And what would it be?
Yes. So at this point, we, we are waiting on the state, um, for the governor to announce his budget estimates. There's a lot of concern amongst myself and my peers that the funding may be limited on what we're looking for. Um, we're in a position where we strategically put ourselves where we have one project this year. Um, it worked out well for us. Um, we knew we were up against the four point six, so we were only thinking one project to make sure we were able to get it done. Um, there is a, a definitive chance, I believe, that there could be some, some funding issues across the state.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll know that in the very near future, um, so that we can start working with the county commissioners as well.
So if, so then based on what the percentage, or based on whatever their reductions are, would we still go forward with the projects that we have for twenty twenty-two and reduce them in scope, or we just have to make up the difference if the state doesn't contribute their full fifty-eight percent? Or we don't know yet?
So for, for us with the one project, um, we're going to get money for this project over two years from the state. Depending on what that number is, you know, if it was, say it was only, they can only give us three point nine, but they could give the rest of it next year, we would work with the commissioners to find a way to make that happen. I, I think if they come back and say, we can only give you a million, then we have to sit down and really evaluate where we are. So until we know what that dollar amount is that they're going to tag, it, I think we have to just remain cautious at this point.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just, I mean, just so not everyone thinks that it's necessarily a slam dunk, because it's not at this point.
Yeah, so I have, um, I've worked here with Mr. Whitten and, um, Ms. Lino. If, if we have to make a cut, and whether it comes from the state or the county, um, I'm already looking at areas that we can, can shift or move to make sure that we can try and preserve Mechanicsville and some of the other projects that we had in twenty twenty-two to move forward. There's some things that we really need to get done, and we would just have to, to adjust and shift, and we would come back to you with those, um, proposals if we need to do that.
Okay, well, I mean, I would hope if they would do that, then the Board of Public Works would relax on what their, what their scope is of their, you know, their definitions of limited reservation renovations or things like that, but, um, you just never know. So, all right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Kathy?
But are these recommendations, are these changes, are they coming from the Board of Public Works? Are they coming from Bob Gurrell and the IAC?
A little bit of both. I mean, some of it is that the governor does have a very strong energy conservation policy, um, that he would like to promote and, and has for a long time. A lot of these other changes, the, the state's, uh, facility assessment, the change of the restructuring power with regional planners, that, that is coming from a redirection of how the IAC, um, would like to, to be under Mr. Gurrell's leadership. Um, and it is fast, and it is difficult to keep up with. Um, and there's, there's a lot of changes because the CIP structure that we have now, the program that we have now is completely different than it was over the, the life of the program. Um, and, and they're, they are coming very fast and quick. And a lot of them, we prepare for them, and then they get delayed. Like the statewide facilities assessment, we've been preparing for this, and then it keeps getting delayed every time we think it's going to launch. So it is kind of a reactive, um, measure that we have to take versus being proactive, which is where we like to be.
The regional facilities managers, is that just a way in which, um, you will, uh, connect with the IAC that's a little different, um, so that they'll have people who are already there, but they'll just have a different area of responsibility? Or is this, he's hiring more people and doing his New Mexico thing?
The regional facility planners would be new positions. So, um, instead of being able to contact the people that are the content experts that we're used to being able to contact and, and work through projects, we would be talking to our regional facilities manager. Um, the ones that were hired are, are new, um, to, to this program. So they do have two in place already. Um, it, the whole idea is that it streams along the process, you got that one person that you go to, and then they go feed the information, um, and get their answers. Um, I still, we have a lot of great connections at, at the state, and they've been very supportive of St. Mary's County. Um, and we want to make sure we can keep those connections gathered because it's, it's, it's those connections that made Mechanicsville work for us this time, to be able to work through that process and understand what our dynamics are here. So hopefully, if we did get a regional facility manager, we can create that great network with them as well.
I, I hope so. Um, I, you know, it's, it, it's no surprise that I'm very aggravated with, um, these changes, uh, coming down from Mr. Gurrell. Um, I've said it often. Um, I, I appreciate that you're continuing to try to bring this forward. Um, I hope that we'll be successful. Um, Mechanicsville very much deserves, um, a modernization there. Uh, it, it's, it's long overdue. Um, so I appreciate you bringing this forward, um, and I hope that, um, as things continue to change, perhaps, um, they'll change for the better. And I'll leave it there.
Maybe with the modernization of Mechanicsville, that'll push us over the edge on our energy policy, and we'll be able to get more funding.
There you go.
Okay, uh, if there's, uh, any more questions from anyone? Oh, Mary?
I was just gonna, I was raising my hand to make the motion.
Oh, okay, well then, go right ahead.
I move that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, that Capitol improvements program, or submission to the interagency permission on school construction.
Do I have a second?
Second?
All right, roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself as aye. All right. Good luck, Ms. Howe.
Thank you, Ms. Howe.
Okay, Dr. Marr, with our calendar update.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Um, at the last board meeting, um, we'll ask the calendar committee to take a look at the calendar relative to the changes that have occurred so far this year. Um, and so Dr. Smith, if you can go to the next slide. Um, two things that we wanted to take a look at is, uh, since the beginning of the school year, we have online learning, which was not part of the calendar development process in January and February. Um, and we will have continued hybrid learning through the first part of the, this school year. That includes all of the models that we've already discussed, hybrid learning synchronous and asynchronous Monday through Friday. Secondly, as you just heard this morning, revisions to policies IK, IKA, and IKB and its related regulations address changes to real-time grading and reporting, um, as well as the need to eliminate, um, a specific date for interim progress reporting. And so, um, the calendar committee reconvened on September first to review these considerations for both online and hybrid learning in the calendar. And so with our recommendations that we're bringing forward to you, we have, uh, one specific change of dates, and then another regarding the grading piece. The first is that on Friday, September twenty-fifth, which would have been a professional development day and the county fair day, um, obviously the changes to our use of that, those Fridays as asynchronous learning days, we can change that date to an instructional day. That then buys us a date at the end of the year, so we would back, uh, June seventh, June, the final day of school with the inclement weather days back up one day to June seventeenth, and the eighteenth would then be a staff development day. Uh, in addition, the calendar would reflect changes to eliminate, um, interim period notations. So, um, for example, on September twenty-fourth, it would have been the end of interim period, and that would, that would be deleted from the, the calendar. Um, in addition, we have changes to the charter school calendar, and I believe Ms. Funya is on, uh, the line as well. And so Ange, do you want to walk through the changes for charter school?
Sure. Uh, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, just to piggyback off of what Dr. Marr had, had said, um, we would recommend the following changes to our calendar, um, to reflect the change in instructional day, uh, for fair day, Friday, September twenty-fifth, to become a student ace for this day. Um, we would also recommend that we make our Monday, October twelfth day be a change to an instructional day when our kindergarten, first, and sixth grade basin would begin. Um, that would change the length of the first quarter to forty-two days. And then we would also take the student days off at the end of the year so that June ninth would be the last day for students. It'd be a two-hour early dismissal day, and then the tenth and eleventh would change to those professional responsibilities and staff element days at the end of the year.
And with that, uh, we recommend that you approve this item as presented. We'll pause for any questions.
Mary?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Nagina?
No questions.
Rita?
No questions.
Kathy?
Thank you very much for taking it back to the calendar committee. I appreciate that, and for, um, posting the exhibits. Um, I don't have any questions.
So, and just, so just so everyone's clear, because it's not specific in the presentation that we just went over, so the two-hour early dismissals for interim's are also being removed from the-
Regular day.
From the, from the calendar day, so there will not be a modified bell schedule.
Those, those days for, for those early dismissals are still there, there in the calendar as professional responsibilities time or professional development as appropriate.
Okay, okay. All right, it was just confusing with the eliminate the interim period notations, so they know whether or not there's still a modified bell schedule on that day.
Those days.
So, okay, um, may I have, oh, Mary?
I was raising my hand to make a motion.
Oh, I got you. Okay, I didn't know if you had another question after that. Okay.
No questions.
All right, does anyone have any more questions? All right, Mary, go ahead with your motion.
Thank you. I move that the Board of Education approve the calendar modifications as presented as fast.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself as aye. The motion is carried. Okay, we have no informational items. Does anyone have anything else?
No.
Okay.
I, I, before we, before we leave, I just would like to, uh, just go back over a few things from public comment. First, all visitors to any building are being screened for temperature. So Ms. Payne was screened. She should not have been. She's an employee. Employees have been asked to make sure that they are following CDC guidelines, and they don't report for work if they have a temperature, if they, they feel ill. The same for if they are bringing their children to work with them. So, um, we're not doing anything different at this building than we're doing at any one of the buildings. There are no visitors being permitted into the building without being an appointment first and being checked for temperature when they come in with their, with their screening, with their, um, safety advocates. Um, and the second is, the, the town hall that's coming up on Wednesday, and we assume everybody's watching the town hall for information. That's how we're conveying information. Then we follow up with a letter afterwards, but we do the town hall first to convey information. The town hall next week is specifically going to be talking about what the world would look like when we go into a hybrid schedule versus learning in-person two days or learning at home five days a week. I know that there's been a lot of speculation on what that would look like. We're going to be addressing that specifically on Wednesday and spending a full hour going over and discussing all of it. Everybody wants to jump to and act upon something very quickly and get angry and frustrated. We are talking about making plans for children to return to in-person instruction in five weeks. to return to in-person instruction in five weeks. You know, so we're talking, we have all of this month, and then we start next month, and we're phasing it in and slowly going. But we do believe very strongly that kids need to be in school at least two days a week, and it is our responsibility to figure out a way to get to that, at least that minimum hybrid learning plan. So for anybody who listened at the beginning and just want to make sure that we just kind of clarify some of those things and make sure that everybody's watching the town hall on Wednesday when we will specifically be talking about what those two options look like instructionally throughout the day.
And didn't you say that as people send questions in, that you either answer them at that town hall or you respond in a fashion?
Yes, so in a perfect world, everybody would be able to come into a town hall. And perhaps this town hall, we'll see if we can make accommodations for having it in a venue where we'd be able to invite people. But if not, we'll still do it here. We answer all the questions that come in beforehand within the presentation itself. And then during the presentation, we monitor any of the proposed questions so that we can answer them in real time.
And one last question. If the caseload here starts to go up, what would the response be?
Right, so if we see a spike, if we see we get above that 5% positivity rate or we have a new, a daily new case rate per 100,000 and it starts to get up into double digits, then it's very simple with the plan. All we have to do is shift it a few weeks and see what happens. We're going to be monitoring data. We're not making decisions in a vacuum, and we're not making an absolute decision that can ultimately be modified based on the reality that we have. So the first thing we do need to know is we need to know from parents how many of them are interested in their child, in their children coming to school for two days out of five and whether or not they would be able to transport them to the school. And we need to have that data so that we can then make an informed decision as to what we can do. So I just wanted to make sure that we clarified that before we left for the day.
I think we all recognize it's really, really difficult for the system, but also for the parents to try to figure out the juggling of their family and how that all fits into this. And I think we'd give anything for this just to go back to a year ago. And, you know, we were all starting school and everybody was together and working, and it was, it was good. Sadly, that's not where we are. But I believe at some point we will get back there. We've just got to get through this. And what I know from many years is that this is not a static system. The work that goes on behind the scenes to make sure we're checking to see where kids are in their developmental stage and their learning process, and then working to address that. So we know there are going to be gaps. But that's why we have dedicated professionals throughout our system to make sure that we are doing our best to address those gaps. And because there are so many moving pieces to this, there are times where something falls through the cracks. But making sure that we figure out where those cracks are and repairing that, that is an ongoing process. And I think it's important to make sure people understand that.
I'm sorry, do we get a response to that? Or there, no, we don't, we don't get a teleprompter?
The last is that Ms. Howe had been speaking of the anticipated revenue projections and things such as that and how that might impact capital improvement. Keep in mind that all school funding is predicated on enrollment, September 30th enrollment, verified enrollment counts, legislation, and COMAR. So there are a whole bunch of factors at play that will impact every single employee of St. Mary's County Public Schools and every single child educated within its system.
Okay, with that, town hall next week.
Town hall next week.
The next regular board meeting is on September 23rd at 6:00 p.m., and we are adjourned.
Thank you.